Good evening and welcome to the Jefferson County Commission meetings. Today is Thursday, December 16th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. If we could please stand and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, approval of minutes. Are there any objections to December 2nd, 2021?
Yeah, we have a small thing to correct on page two. I'm thinking I have this right. At the top, it says, "A motion by Mr. Silver to approve accounts payable, but that amount would not match what's in the chart above." And I think that was manual checks for last week. And so there needs to be a different list before you get the motion.
Okay, so we could, we could correct that on page two for manual checks. Are there any other objections to that? I hear none. I hear no objection there approved this presented with that one minor correction. Approval accounts payable for December 9th, 2021 in amount of $453,577.14. If there are no objections, that is approved. Approval for December 16th, 2021 in amount of $201,122.98. If there are no objections, that is approved. Approval of manual checks for December 10th, 2021 in amount of $11,833.53. If there are no objections, that is approved. Also for approval of manual checks December 17th, 2021 in amount of $62,378.3. If there are no objections, that is approved. Approval payable for December 9th, 2021 in amount of $277,913.41. There are no objections. We'll move on to agenda number one, which is anti-biases. I think the exoneration did not come in. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we're going to move on to agenda number two. Martin Burke, Jefferson County Historic Landmarks Commission, request to waive the application fee to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance at Duffield Steeple. Is Martin Burke online? Okay, go ahead, Martin.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Let me turn my camera on. Well, I don't seem to have my camera functioning at the moment. As I've stated, we're, I request that the application fee for the Board of Zoning Appeals be waived. This is a landmarks commission property on the near Duffield's parking station. And the depot itself is on the National Register of Historic Places, was gifted to the Landmarks Commission in 2018. We're currently working to rehabilitate the stone station master's quarters as a small museum only on the first floor. It's about a 600 square feet space. And under the zoning rules, we have to, one parking space for every 400 square feet of, so the, the site does not permit this. It's a difficult access. Most of the property is in a flood plain. So we would like to move the parking over to the Duffield's train station parking lot, which is about 150 yards away. So. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Burke?
No.
All right. I'll go ahead and do a motion to allow the applicant to waive the application fee to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the Jefferson County Historic Landmarks Commission for this project. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And just so, I did not do this already, I apologize. Just so we know who's online, I think Claire and Tricia are both online. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm here.
That's Tricia. Okay, is Claire on? I know she was traveling, was going to try to get on, so. Okay, all right. All right, thank you. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to agenda number, number three. Ross.
I'm in motion, don't say. I didn't even get a chance to sit and prepare myself.
We're going, so this is agenda number three. Russell Burgess, IT Director, Broadband Committee, resolution and applicant form for gig-ready technical assistance. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I have a couple maps. I didn't have these in turn for the agenda. They're out on broadband, wv.gov. But these are just some updated maps showing unserved or underserved addresses within the county that are being targeted as part of this program.
Can you tell me what the colors mean on each one?
They have just highlighted the colors, I think, just to kind of discern them out or be able to bring them out. But these are simply areas that they've kind of tentatively identified as areas that we might want to target or that have these unserved addresses. If I can, let me just go through prepared speech, but just a little talk. What we're here this evening is to ask the Commission to pass a resolution authorizing the submission of a gig-ready technical assistance application to the West Virginia Broadband Enhancement Council under the Department of Economic Development. So whereas we discussed before, the identification of approximately 2,200 addresses in Jefferson County that are either unserved or underserved. And I brought you these maps to kind of show you these about the approximate areas and addresses. What this resolution is for is before we can begin these programs, we would apply for technical assistance to help us develop a project. So if you pick either one of these maps in one of these areas, I'm just going to pick one at random. It's around Van Cleesville and it shows 122 addresses. What the technical assistance program would help us do is identify how we would actually serve these addresses, approximate cost and items like that. As part of this program, to apply for this technical assistance application, we have to have a resolution that shows that the Commission is willing to commit to up to a 25% match of any projects that we would come back and identify. You would still have, at the time that we did the project, a chance to come back then and say, "We're definitely going to approve. You're not going to approve." But what they're asking now is that you are making a commitment to put funding out there to support these programs, to bring broadband to these addresses. Now, I'm going to put some numbers out here, and these are very high-level numbers, and they're just estimates, but they're looking for a 25% match. And one of the high-level numbers that they put out there per address was approximately $5,000 per address, which would mean if we had a 25% match, that would be $1,250 that the Commission would be committing to that if this turned out to be a viable project and it was put forward. We've also gone as low as, I believe, $500 per address. That would be the Commission's match. But if you do the numbers on some of these and look at these projects, take the Van Cleesville, for instance, and let's say that worked out for 122 addresses. We developed a viable project and we know how we're going to run the lines and get broadband out there. And they said, "Okay, it's going to come out near 25% match. That is $500 per address." That means the Commission's willing to put up $500 times 122 for that one project. And the technical assistance application requires that you pass this resolution saying that you all are committed to participating in this program. In other words, this is something you really want to do. This is, this is important to you to get broadband to these uncertain, underserved addresses. So just as a added thing, if it was, and again, these numbers are all preliminary numbers, kind of high-level estimates, but let's say we stayed at that $500 per address and we could do all 2,200 addresses in the county. I mean, that would be a commitment from the Commission of $1.1 million. I don't know that, you know, as we're going to come across or do these, but that's the question in front of you today is how much of a commitment? Are you willing to make that 25% commitment to try to identify some projects that we can bring broadband to these uncertain, underserved addresses in the county?
I like the numbers, the earlier numbers that way.
Well, I see, you see the different ones and where they're at. And again, this is all, this, this money's coming out of the state. But again, they're requiring a 25% match by the counties to, to do this. So they're willing to put up 75% of the money to try to get broadband to these addresses that do not have. That's the whole point, I think, of some of the things we've been trying to do as the broadband committee is identify ways that we can bring broadband to these addresses. This is not an end-all or anything like that. There are other programs going on. We're working on, on other ones. There's also a program for ISPs through the state. So there's different ones, but we're trying to identify the best ones that we can, that we could serve and help our citizens.
It's Michelle.
Yeah, I'm here. Just preliminarily, I think we would be talking about a 1 to 1.5 million dollar county match. And if we're, if they're getting federal funding through the state, you typically cannot use federal funding for that particular match. It would need to be actual county funding. So it would need to probably come from our capital outlay fund or from our general fund if we wanted to. It's a pretty big number, 1 to 1.5 million dollars.
And so we're not permitted to use ARPA funds for that?
No, no, not at all.
Well, I, there is one. The four, the fourth, whereas, says, "The Commission will have the opportunity to understand the estimated product scope and cost before the match pledge becomes binding." So is this the binding match pledge? Or if we get the details of the project and then we can?
And get the details of the project later. But they want to see that you are committed to going through and trying to accomplish these goals. But that's, they're, they're not going to render the technical assistance to draw out all these plans and get a completed project and say, "Okay, we've got a completed project to serve these 422 houses," or say houses, addresses, I apologize, "these 422 properties," or 122 unless the Commission is showing that they are, are willing to provide that commitment and understand that it is going to require money from the Commission to accomplish these projects. And we have David Deemer on also. I don't know, David, if you would like to add anything?
Please do.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you all for considering this. But to kind of, I apologize to go against Ms. Gordon's comment, but the ARPA funds are eligible match for the state funding program. They're encouraging it to use your, your local ARPA funds for just the state funding, state program. So your ARPA funds will be eligible for gig-ready technical assistance and gig-ready programs.
Yeah, that's what I thought from our broadband meetings, that, you know, always know someone else has more information.
Thank you, David. I was not aware of that. I thought it was not available.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
No, you're welcome, absolutely. It's strongly encouraged to utilize your ARPA funds for the state funding. Now, you are correct, the federal funds, you are not. You're not allowed to match federal with federal, but our state funding, absolutely.
And how much, how much of it's state funding?
It depends on the program for that. So each program that they have available right now, it varies depending on which one. It's major projects or gig-ready or whatever tranche of money they identify a project source. So it varies across the board.
Okay.
Thank you. How much state is, I was, I was under the impression that the state was on board to find all our, a lot of our broadband issues through their, their art money. And do we know if that's accurate or not? Or is that just, is there sense in the county and the states both spending money trying to come up with the same solution if they already had plans to do this? I don't know.
David, do you want to answer that?
I believe they anticipated a group effort with, with the match of local funds and the state funding. If you, the state funding was heavily relying, I think, on local communities matching the funds from the state. And then also the federal programs as well.
All right. So. I guess when we commit 25%, I would like to know more. We could bid in 25% to 100,000 or 25% to a million. I guess we take worst-case scenario. So that's a, that's a big difference.
It is, it is a big difference. I think as part of this for us even to go forward and to try to develop projects for any of these locations, we, they've got to show that you're willing to commit something. Now, let's say with the technical assistance, and I don't know, David, if we, we said, you know, we're willing to put this commitment to the 25% and, you know, we really think our county, we'd like to keep it at $200,000. Would we, would they help us develop projects that would stay within that amount? And then?
And that's something you, I think you can include in your resolution, 25% up to a certain amount. I don't, I had to say, I don't, I don't think that would be a problem. But again, you can, you can adjust your scope after the technical assistance. We say that's too much and you can bring that, you can rein it in down to where you're comfortable. So again, that's up to, up to the Commission. But the technical assistance, like Russ said earlier, it's just they want a commitment group entering into the technical assistance, assistance programs.
Again, I think one of the things when you look at this and, and these maps and you see these different areas, my belief, and I'm just, this is my personal thought, is that some of these areas would be more cost-effective as a proposal than others. Now, how you decide that, that I don't know. How do you decide and say, "Okay, we have a certain amount of money, so we're going to commit to projects up to 100 addresses," or something like that? And then cost-effectiveness, so then, then the decision is who picks which areas? You know, because obviously if I'm a citizen and I live in Scrabble, well, I want to work in Scrabble. And if you're a citizen in Shenandoah Junction, you want a Shenandoah Junction area, that's another question, and I think that's something that we would kind of review. And I believe it would be up to the amount that you're, you're willing to look at to then decide, "Hey, this, this area is more cost-effective than the others." Not that we don't like you, Kayla, but Jane's area is much more cost-effective. But then again, you know, the point of this is, I think, to bring broadband to some of the rural areas. So is cost-effectiveness, is that a good, you know, is that a good thing to look at? And I don't know the answer to that. I mean, obviously, we're here to serve all of the citizens of Jefferson County.
No matter what we decide on the resolution, the technical assistance, are they going, going to do the study on the entire county, on the underserved areas? And then we get a cost for each different area and can kind of decide which projects to pursue within our budget?
I think that they will help us pursue projects that we want to look at. David, I, I don't know as far as that goes. I mean, do you think that with this technical assistance, they would look at each of these areas and help us do projects for the whole different parts of it? Break it into parts? Or do you have any thought from that, from the broadband council?
I think they're going to look in to try and serve the most amount of unserved folks as they can in an efficient manner. So I, I think they're going to be looking at the best interest for Jefferson County, get the most amount of people connected to broadband. So if they have a project that makes the most sense, where they're going to serve the most amount of people, I think that's where they're going to look at and proposing projects for those areas.
So in that case, I mean, I look at some of these and I see, you know, the Scrabble area, 477, Lower Crossroads area, 328, outside of Charlestown, between Charlestown and Millville, 184, Summit Point out that way, 150, you know, these different areas. But again, you're, you're not saying that you're going to do a certain amount of money or whatever, but you are saying that you are willing to commit to a project and that the county commission will come up with money if we identify a viable project, you know, within reason and within what the county can do.
What's the pleasure of the Commission?
I had another question.
Yes.
Are we going to be leasing this infrastructure? Will, like, will we get some of that money back?
I, I think one of the things that we looked at, there are a couple of different ways that we had talked about. I think these projects would go with the infrastructure would be built out and the county retaining ownership of it and leasing it out, or the infrastructure being built out and turned over to maybe whoever is the most viable candidate. And I think that that is, within the project, that is a decision that we could make.
I think that makes the numbers a little more tolerable.
Yeah, I, I think if you, you build it out and you have it available, if the county still controls that actual infrastructure, then yes, you could lease it out. I, I don't, I don't know how the businesses themselves would look at that. And that's, that's, yeah, that's beyond my comprehension as to what they would be willing to do. You know, if you say, "Okay, we've got, we've got the infrastructure to serve 400 homes." How much would you be willing to pay for a lease to have that equipment to serve those homes? And, you know, I guess if you serve those homes, doesn't necessarily mean they're going to sign up for the service also. So, yeah, so I mean, there's different things to look at.
Okay.
So can we find out from Michelle how much state ARPA funds we have that aren't committed to something else?
I don't know. I'm not sure. Michelle, we still?
Michelle, are you still on?
Our ARPA funds from the federal government, we have spent about 1.5, I'm sorry, we've committed about $2 million so far. So we have a little over 8 million, almost 9 million left to allocate.
But that's federal, right?
It's all federal. We don't have any direct funding from ARPA through the state.
Okay.
All of your funding is direct through the Treasury from the federal government.
Yeah, and we can't use that money to match this.
Well, I think Mr. Deemer said that we can use it for the state grant funding. We can't use it as a federal grant funding match. We can for a state grant funding match. So it's all going to depend on whether this grant is federal monies passing through the state or if it's strictly state money.
If I can add one more thing, and this is just my thoughts on it. I mean, I think that, that providing broadband to our citizens is vitally important. I believe in today's day and age, if you have a child in a household that does not have broadband, they are, they're. Yeah, they are, they're at a disadvantage. So, you know, this is, this is our youth, our future that we're talking about here. When we look at this, that we can help, you know, our, our citizens and our future here to provide them these opportunities that I think that, you know, to me, I believe we should all have, but obviously not, we don't get everything that we want.
I don't, I don't have a problem moving this forward, but I think we want a ceiling on it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I can move a motion to have it open for discussion. You don't want me to do that? I don't know what the other commissioners or what your thoughts are on the ceiling. I was thinking maybe 250,000 to start off with. I don't know that, how far that we, we don't know, we don't know what numbers.
We, we don't know. These are preliminary numbers, and I threw out the 1,250 and the 500 as numbers we had discussed. It, it just depends on the projects. You know, I have not been to these addresses. Are they, you know, are they 600 yards down a gravel lane? Or are they really just right off the road? And that's the thing, that's what the technical assistance application will help us determine is, you know, if we go serve these houses, you have 30 of them that, you know, are more than 400 yards down a lane or something like that, and some of them are closer. So that would be helping us get a project out there with the cost to do and then telling us, "Okay, here's, here's what you're looking at as a cost to have that, those lines run."
Okay.
Well, I, I know you mentioned the price, but I think my limited understanding of this whole field, and I'm trying to, you know, wrap my head around it, I think we need to go more like 1 million if we're going to fund a project.
I mean, even if you say a million, that does not mean when we come back with a project.
That we're going to spend it all.
That you're going to spend it, and it doesn't mean that you have to at that time. You could look at that and say, "Okay, you came up with this project. We, we were looking at a million and hoping to serve 2,200. And your project says we're going to commit a million and serve 100." And, you know, then you could come back and say, "That does not mean with what we were hoping to accomplish." But, you know, if you say, "Hey, we, we're willing to theoretically look at spending a million dollars, and we come back with projects that serve, you know, 2,000 or 2,200 of these addresses," then, I, I mean, that, that's just dependent on your, your thoughts as to, is this a viable use of the county's money or the ARPA funding money? To, again, to me, it's the future for our citizens or children. I, I can tell you, I live in a house that has very limited internet service. And it is, it's tough. I mean, it's tough. I don't have any children, but if I did, I would probably move.
Sure.
Well, and I know that sounds like a terrible amount of money, but this, from my experience, any of these projects are going to cost. That's why they've not served yet. It's expensive.
Sure. No doubt. Does any other commissioners have any thoughts on the cap or up to a certain amount?
Since I'm fond of the million, it's, I'm not even sure if we really need one because it's not binding. And we can say no to the projects they propose. So we can just say like, "No."
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, if we don't have to put it.
And we don't have to put a cap on it, then, okay.
I think that really gives us the opportunity to do our best developing these projects. Mr. Deemer has been excellent with this, and I know that he will continue with us. And then getting the technical assistance, I believe we can come back with some viable projects that will serve for citizens.
And we can pick and choose which ones we think are maybe the best bang for our buck, whatever.
Okay. All right, well, I was just going to move the motion then to, to accept this resolution authorizing the submission of a gig-ready technical assistance application to the West Virginia Broadband Enhancement Council under the Department of Economic Development.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries? Thanks, sir.
Thank you all very much. Bring back some very.
We assign something.
Two projects, yeah. Stephanie has that, so she can, or Sandy, sorry.
All right. We're going to move on to agenda number four, interview and appointments to the Jefferson County Development Authority. We have a representative seat open for Harpers Ferry and one for Bolivar. Do we have our applicants on line? Gee, I see Gina. And.
Well, get it straight, who's Oliver and who's?
Gina, what are you, let me see here. You're Bolivar.
Yeah.
All right, Gina, I see you're, I see you popped up first. Could you tell us why you would like to be on the Development Authority?
I definitely, I love my town of Bolivar. I want to be involved in any type of development that may impact it either negatively or positively. I'm very much, I wouldn't say pro-growth, but I'm definitely about managed growth and trying to make sure that we, we do our best to make the right choices in and around development, especially residential development. So that's really where I, where I was standing.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Siskin? All right. And then we have another applicant from Harpers Ferry. It is Edward Love, is that right?
Yes, you got that right. Can you hear me okay?
I'm trying to look at the screen as far away from you. Can you tell us why you would like to serve on the Jefferson County Development Authority?
Yeah, sure. So I am a resident of Harpers Ferry and I run a little vacation rental company called Mountain Mama Vacation Homes, which we manage rentals in Harpers Ferry, but also across Jefferson County. So I not only, you know, I feel like I'm perfectly at the crossroads of the two, living and working both in the town and, and the county as a whole. And, you know, the JCBA, one of their key industries is tourism. And, you know, right, are exactly what I do. And, and tourism is, if you guys are well aware, is kind of the, the critical industry for Harpers Ferry specifically. So, so I think it makes a lot of sense having someone in tourism to represent the town of Harpers Ferry. And, and really, I, you know, I moved here because I, I, you know, Jefferson County is a beautiful place to live, it's a beautiful place to visit. And, you know, I'm excited to share that with other people. And I think that fits very well with the Jefferson County Development Authorities. And I think that fits very well with the Jefferson County Development Authority's mission. And so I'm kind of already living out that mission day in and day out with the business I'm running. And being able to take that just a step further and, you know, officially be part of the leadership team at the JCPA just makes a lot of sense. So that's why I would like to be considered for the appointment.
Thank you. Does anybody else, any commissioners have any questions?
There's no one else online that wants to be reviewed for these positions. We've got a couple of their names, but I don't know if they're online. No, okay.
All right. All right. Well, I'll, okay, I'll move a motion to point Mr. Edward Love to the Harpers Ferry representative for the Jefferson County Development Authority. I don't know how long the term is, so I would usually add those into the motion if I don't have that right in front of me.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to also move a motion to accept Gina Sisco as Bolivar representative for the Jefferson County Development Authority.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, you can answer both. Thank you all. What you need to do is...
Thank you all.
You need to get sworn in, and then we talk to Dennis. He can help you out there. We'll go down to the first office, get sworn in, and you'll sit in on the next meeting. Thank you, guys.
There you have it.
Thank you. All right.
Commissioner Stalfer, can you...
Go ahead.
The, Mr. Love's position will sunset April 5, 2022, and the unexpired term for Bolivar sets the same time, April 5, 2022. So both candidates would be sitting until the 1st of April.
Okay. And we can add that to the minutes just so we have...
Yes, sir. Just clarification. I apologize.
No problem. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Chad Wallen with Integrity, Ridge Road rezoning request. See Chad, go ahead, sir. You have the floor.
All right. We're proposing the rezoning of a ridge road that's across the road from TA Lowery Elementary. It's going to be, it's currently zoned industrial. We're seeking residential growth. So their quest tonight is to schedule a public hearing before the County Commission and to send down to the Planning Commission for their review for consistency with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. I believe that we will have, it goes to the Planning Commission, which their next meeting is January 11. So we have 60 days to schedule your public hearing. So the earliest we can do it is January 20, or we can put you on for February 3. What do you prefer? Which one would you prefer, sir?
We are good with either, but January 20 might as well. Sooner the better.
Yeah. All right. I'll move a motion to schedule a public hearing for the Ridge Road rezoning request as presented by Mr. Wallen tonight.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, you can answer. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wallen.
Thank you.
I think you need to go to the beginning of the motion and say, motion to accept the zoning map amendment request, refer to the Planning Commission.
Okay, sorry. I'm just, I'm reading off my agenda here. All right.
We just voted something we need a motion to reconsider.
All right, yeah. I'll have a motion to reconsider to add. Motion to accept the rezoning map amendment request, I'll read the written motion. So I don't do...
Cover all the bases.
I will amend my motion to include motion to accept the zoning map amendment request, refer to the Planning Commission for review of the comprehensive plan consistency, and to schedule a public hearing before the County Commission on January 20. We'll set that hearing at a time. Do we have set a time for that or just the date?
I'm not positive, but I believe there's another hearing in the CDA, so it would be a good thing.
Okay. All right. That's my amended motion. Do I have a second? Any discussion? You missed that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, you can answer. Thank you. All right. We're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Michelle Ward, Finance Director, Review and Approval FY2022 State Budget Revision Two for the General County Fund, Review and Approval FY22 State Revision Two for the Coal Severance, Review FY23 Budget Charge for Departments, and Discuss the Civil Service Employee Annual Lead Curro- Maximals. Go ahead, ma'am.
First item I have on your agenda is reviewing approval of fiscal year '22 State Budget Revision Number Two for the General Fund. It's made up of several components. First component would be to adjust fund balance to match the ending fund balance based on our financial statements that were typed in the paper, and to increase our unencumbered fund balance, beginning fund balance for fiscal year '22, and increase the transfers to capital outlay fund by 340,469. The second budget revision relates to transfer part-time wages from the 901 Communication Center to the IT Department for the part-time CAT administrator position, and that was approved on October 21 of 2021. I estimate that amount will be about $12,000 for wages, and then the benefits were an additional $1,000. Third portion is to transfer from the Coal Severance Fund to the General Fund, $4,063 to cover the county clerk's plat cabinet. That was approved by the commission on October 7, 2021. The fourth portion is our prosecuting attorney's office is investigating a crime scene, and they need some additional funding that they did not budget for. So far, they've accumulated $3,279 for trash removal services. The fifth portion would be for Circuit Court Clerk. She has a very small apartment, and she's indicated that she, her travel budget for fiscal year '22 with a 75% cut is causing her hardship due to her new position within the Circuit Clerks Association. She's asking that we restore her funding to her original request of $2,625 to her travel department, and that would be funded out of our financial stabilization fund or any fund balance. The sixth portion of that would be that we were notified by the West Virginia State Deputy Retirement System that the employer contribution rate increased from 12% to 13%, and we budgeted 12%. So I need to provide the Sheriff's Department an additional $17,192, otherwise they will rub a budget in their retirement plan. Any questions about any of those budget revisions?
Yes, I have related to number five. I guess I just have a question. I just, I know we cut travel 75% across all departments, and I just have a concern of restoring the circuit clerks without looking at the other departments and where they're at. And, you know, restoring one department and not taking a good hard look at all the other departments, particularly the other elected officials.
I have been contacted by the assessor, and she has indicated that if she gets towards the end of the year and she thinks she's going to need additional funds, she will reach out to me. And all of the other elected officials have been notified that if they find they're going to have any problems with their travel budget with it at the reduced rate, they need to contact me and we'll put them on individually. So I have reached out to all of them.
That sounds good.
Yep. Does anybody else have any further questions? And you need three motions?
Yeah, this does need a motion because it is a state budget revision.
I move to accept the FY22 State Budget Revision Two for the General Fund.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Next is State Budget Revision Number Two for the Coal Severance Fund for fiscal year '22. It's very similar to the first one, just the opposite side of that. The first portion of that is to increase beginning fund balance for fiscal year '22 based on the ending fund balance for fiscal year '21 of $1,800, and we typically offset that with County Commission Professional Services. The second portion of that relates to the county clerk's new plat cabinet that we funded from the Coal Severance Fund. This is the other side of that, to transfer $4,163 from Coal Severance to our general fund. On the third portion, on October 21, JCPA was approved with up to $20,000 for legal fees from the Coal Severance Fund, and this is that budget revision. The fourth portion also was on October 21. We approved $500 to provide civil service training on October 21. So that's a budget revision for that. I'll move that we accept fiscal year '22 State Budget Revision Number Two for the Coal Severance Fund.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
The third item I have on the agenda is to review the fiscal year '23 department for departments, something that I do on an annual basis in December, and then I send information to the departments as well as local agencies, letting them know what your what your budget charge would be for the upcoming fiscal year budget. So I did provide you with some additional information. The county realized an increase in tax revenue approximately $279,000 in fiscal year '21 over fiscal year '20. I am projecting that we will have about a $36,000 increase for fiscal year '22. So this would be pretty flat from fiscal year '21 to fiscal year '22. Now, for fiscal year '23, I'm projecting that we will have a preliminary increase of about $473,000 compared to fiscal year '22's budget. Final assessment values are not available from the assessment until late January or early February. Preliminary numbers indicate that real property assessed values will increase by about 10% or $355 million in fiscal year '23 over fiscal year '22's assessed values of 3.5 billion. The increase is a result of new construction of about $70 million, and the remainder of the increase of about 9.75% is increases in market value of existing properties. During the fiscal years 2017 through '22, the county realized an average annual worth in the total real property accessible base of about 4.5%. So the increase that we're anticipating for fiscal year '23 is pretty large. The levy rate is driven by growth in the assessable base value of existing properties. New construction does not impact that calculation. However, new construction does impact the final calculation of tax revenue that's generated. The county reached the maximum levy rate in fiscal year '19. The Class II levy rate, which is where all of our residential and our occupied properties reside, is that, was at the max levy rate of $28.60 for $100 of assessed value through fiscal year '22. Now, based on the preliminary calculations with that increase of about 9.75 to 10% in market value, I'm anticipating that the increase in the assessable base growth for existing properties could mean that the tax rate will decrease by 2% to 4% for fiscal year '23. Now, this doesn't mean that, you know, average homeowner's tax bill will go down because property value probably went up. Most property owners will still see an increase in their assessable base of 9% to 10%. They just will only see about a 2.5% to 3% increase in their actual tax bill.
But then we won't, if we can roll it back, then we won't be at the max levy rate.
Right. And we're not allowed to increase our levy, we're not allowed to increase our total tax revenue by more than 2.85%. So if we have a 10% increase in our assessable base, we still, a 10% increase, we still can't increase it more than 2.85%. So that's why the levy rate will most likely go down. Fiscal year '23 and future budget projections. If you look at your packet on the third and fourth pages, I did include revenue projections, a five-year revenue projection. However, there's a little more detail here in a minute. For the property transfer tax, this revenue realized increases due to the small bubble in the housing market sales and changes in state legislature that took effect on July 1 of 2021. So this revenue will level out for fiscal year '23, as I anticipate housing sales will start to level out or potentially come back down. However, we will still realize increases annually over the next 10 years to 8% to 10% because of the legislative changes that took place on July 1. Video lottery revenue, to estimate fiscal year '23's revenue of 2.8 million, an increase of 3.1% was included over fiscal year '22's projected revenue of 2.8 million. So I'm projecting that to be slightly flat, only increasing by about $86,000. The five-year projection includes increases from fiscal through fiscal year '25, as the economy is expected to slowly recover from the COVID-19 pandemic, business closures, and reductions of business hours and capacity. Future years after fiscal year '25 will reflect that this revenue affects a flat revenue stream. Table games revenue, as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, fiscal year '21's actual table game revenue decreased by almost 30% or from $508,000 in fiscal year '22 to $406,000 in fiscal year '21. Fiscal year '19 was actually the first year since fiscal year '12 that this revenue did not decline. Fiscal year '22's budget is expected to need a revision to $290,000. So fiscal year '22 is expected to end the fiscal year with about a 10% increase over fiscal year '21. This revenue stream was impacted by COVID-19 pandemic business closures. So for fiscal year '23, I'm projecting that it'll return back to a flat rate of about $500,000. Future years after fiscal year '25 will be very much like video lottery revenue, and it'll return back to a flat revenue stream that we had seen in the past prior to the pandemic. Medical insurance expenses, based on discussions with our insurance representative, the anticipated continuance of the Affordable Care Act, we should plan on continued increases in fiscal year '23 and future years. Projection purposes, I included a 5% annual increase, which is about $115,000 annually. For fiscal year '21, an analysis of the employer versus employee premiums showed that the county was paying much higher portion of the insurance premiums than that of our surrounding jurisdictions. The commission did adopt a plan to close this gap, and this plan will slowly increase the employee portion of insurance premiums from fiscal year '21 through fiscal year '29. Now, we did place a temporary hold on that in fiscal year '22 due to the pandemic and the fact that we didn't give our employees any increases. So I do recommend that we restart this plan for fiscal year '23. Employees' salaries, merit increases for full-time employees, received regular merit increases since fiscal year '17. In fiscal year '19, the county realigned the grade scale and implemented a performance merit or merit-based system for employee annual increases that would become effective on employee hire dates. Employees did not receive a merit increase during fiscal year '22. Fiscal year '23 projections, I have included the cost of a full year of employee merit increases or $195,000, and future years also include that 2%. For fiscal year '23, I would recommend that we do something different. As I've mentioned previously, we've had, we have a number of long-term employees who've been through the years where no increases were given at all. So I would recommend that the commission consider equity adjustments in fiscal year '23 due to the number of years that employees have gone without those regular increases, and the county is beginning to experience salary equity issues where newer employees are earning similar, and in some cases, more than longer-term employees. In the fiscal year '23 projections that I've included, I did include $750,000 to implement a salary equity plan for full-time employees, whereby employees with at least one year, one full year of service as of July 1, '22 be provided with an increase on July 1 based on their years of service. The plan that I'm proposing, which can be adjusted as we discuss it in further detail during the actual budget process, what I included in that $750,000 was that employees with one to three years of service would be provided with a 2% increase. Employees with four to five years of service would be provided with a 4% increase. Six to seven years of service, a 6% increase. Eight to 10 years of service, an 8% increase. And employees with 11 or more years of service would be provided with a 10% increase. I will tell you that Berkeley County just provided all of their employees a 10% increase on July 1 of 2021, and the state also just recently approved another 5% increase for all of their employees in addition to a 2.5% inflation one-time bonus for employees.
Now, this equity adjustment, would that be a one-time adjustment? Do you see it happening that way, or is that something we'd have to look at each?
It would carry forward in every year because although we would only do it once...
Right. Then it's built into...
It would be built into their salary going forward, and you'll see that in the projections when I get there. I'll show you where it's at.
Okay. That's what I thought.
Cost of living adjustments. Now, to ensure that the county is maintaining competitive salaries with neighboring states and other West Virginia counties, I recommend that we continue regular COLAs for employees through adjustments in accounting's grade scale. The projection includes $75,000 of fiscal year '23 for COLA. Future years also include points, 0.7... points, 0.7% for COLAs. COLAs are generally determined based on the CPI index or the Consumer Price Index for the previous year. The CPI index rate for the 12 months ending October 2021 is much higher than it normally is. It was actually 6.2%. Normally, it's about 1 to 1.2%. And that is why the state is giving their employees a 2.5% inflation bonus. It's a one-time lump sum payment to offset that inflation that they're seeing right now. So that's also something we could consider. I did not include it, I just heard about it today, so.
I just filled up my gas tank.
Yeah. On the next page, I just carried forward some of the budget charge items from the prior year, which included new fee considerations for hire fee. And I included the amounts of a COLA, what each 1% cost about $110,000. So that as you decide how much of a COLA to give to employees, then this is how much we would need to budget for. The revenue projections are on the next page. You can see that our tax revenue is expected to increase from projected, the original budget of 15.2 million to 15.6 million for fiscal year 23, and then it increases by about 3% per year in the future years. Property transfer tax, that's another big one. That's I included a 10% increase in future years for that. However, I expect it to stay fairly flat for fiscal year 23 because I think sales are going to start coming back down. We could be surprised to see it go up, but I'd like to keep that flat as a conservative number. Hotel occupancy tax, I included a 40% increase for fiscal year 23 as I believe the trend for fiscal year 22 shows that it's going to restore to its normal levels. I included a 20% increase for fiscal year 24, and then it should return back to its normal trends in fiscal year 25 of 3% to 5% annually. Building permits, we hit a high of 558,000 in fiscal year 21. I understand that it's still going pretty strong. However, it's, it's not going to hit the high that we saw back, I think, in fiscal year 9 of 1.2, 1.6 million. So I do expect that that will also level out as the housing market starts to level out. So I only included a 3% increase for that in fiscal year 23. Grant revenue, prior in fiscal year 20 and 21 included our CARES Act funding, so that's why those numbers are pretty high. I expect it in fiscal year 23 to be back down to normal of about 150,000 annually. Majority of our grant revenue relates to Homeland Security funding for our three staff members there, and we've received some equipment grants normally in the Sheriff's Department. 911 fees, I expect that to see it only have about a 1% increase, still fairly flat at $2 million. And then table games revenue, I have those highlighted as well so that you can see where those are at. I'm showing a 2% increase for fiscal year 23, and then it should stay pretty flat. Video lottery, I'm showing that it should be 2.9 million for fiscal year 23, and that's still pretty flat compared to what it projected will be for fiscal year 22. Total revenues for fiscal year 23 are projected to be 28.4 million. The next page is just a projection. Departments have not submitted their request yet, so typically what I do for the projection purposes is I include a 2% increase for all departments except for maintenance. I think this is where we have our utilities, so I typically include a larger percent for them. The amounts that I talked about for COLA merit increase and the equity adjustments are included up under the commission's line items, so I have 195,000 and then carries forward into the out-years, 750,000 and 75,000, and that's also carried forward into the out-years to show that they would be a recurring expense should they be approved. Central garage also has a 6% increase. That's where our fuel is and our fuel prices are pretty high right now. On the last, second to last page, or the last page of the projections, transfers from the ARPA fund, we have 1.5 million in transfers in fiscal year 21. I projected in fiscal year 22, we'll have about 1.1 million in transfers from the ARPA fund for lost revenues. And then fiscal year 23, that should decline to 803,000 in fiscal year 24. Those are low projections, they couldn't be higher. We can also include other amounts for any expenditures that we might want to reimburse to the general fund. So for example, the three deputies that, or the two deputies that we just approved, they'll be paid for directly out of the ARPA fund. They won't actually hit the general fund, so I didn't include those. So I'm showing that end of fiscal year 23, we'll start our beginning year fund balance at 5.3 million, and we should end the year at 4.9 million, and we'll still pay in compliance with our fund balance requirement, 16.67%.
Wait.
The last page will be our fiscal year 23 budget process calendar. It's pretty standard. Every year, I've highlighted the dates that still need to be decided upon. I've used, I base the calendar off of the same calendar that we had last year. So November is typically when I compile revenue estimates. December the 1st, I, I've already received the preliminary estimates from the assessor. December the 16th, which will be today, I'm giving you the budget charge information, and we'll get the budget charge from you. Mid-December is typically when I start to receive health insurance renewal rates. The last week of December, I will distribute budget reports to the departments. By the per-state code, we must do this before the first week of February. We need to do it before the end of January. January the 20th, I will expect department heads to return their budgets. By state code, this must be done by March the 2nd. And then usually a few days later, I expect elected officials to return their budgets to me. So I have theirs being returned on January the 24th. I try to have the budget binder to you by January the 31st so that we can begin our budget deliberations during the month of February. We typically do a budget 101 session, so I tend to typically have that scheduled for February the 8th at 7:00 PM. During that same week, February 7th through the 11th, we'll need to schedule two to three full days of individual department budget presentations with the commissioners. We can schedule that during mid-January, or we can, I can schedule that now, it's up to you. Typically, we'll wait until closer to middle of January to schedule those. March the 2nd, the assessor is required to certify the value of all real and personal property, and it must be done by March the 3rd. Mid-March, I should have final health insurance renewal rates from our broker. March the 17th, this is currently an evening session, but we typically do it in the evening. We could actually do it during the day, but I have March the 17th scheduled as the day that the commissioners will adopt the budget. By regulation, it must be done before March the 29th. If March the 17th doesn't work, we can always schedule that for March the 22nd. March the 24th, the budget must be published by March 28th each year in the local paper of record, and that is the spirit. April and May, I usually get the final health insurance renewal rates, and I'll present those to the commission in the same way that I did in the prior years. April the 19th, the commissioners must reconvene and reconsider any objections, and they should proceed to lay the property tax levy rates. By regulation, it must be done on April the 19th, so we cannot change that date, which is the 3rd Tuesday in April, and we normally do that as a 9:30 AM meeting. And then on April the 22nd, I will forward the levy order to the state's auditor's office, and by regulation, it must be done three days of the 3rd Tuesday in April. So those two dates are first set, and certainly we can't change those dates. So I will open it up to the commissioners now to get your budget charge for the departments. What do you want me to express to them as far as what you're looking for in the upcoming budget, what you're looking for in their presentations, what you're looking for in their requests, things like that?
I think the biggest thing I want to know is just if there's, if there are any different, if it's different from last year. Obviously, we went over the budget last year, the numbers, and, and why they're different. And I would ask each of them to keep their presentation to a minimum. And we just want to hear, I don't know, I have other permission for you. I want to hear just what, if they're asking for more money and why.
I think that's pretty straightforward, and you know.
Yeah, and be, and be straightforward. We don't, we don't want to hear about all the papers you bought last year and the stamps. We just want to hear the numbers we need to hear so we can make the decision.
No, I am at first one, very, you know, interested in pursuing the salary adjustments, I mean, I think that's something we, we need to tend to, and maybe that doesn't turn up. You don't need to go over it in each presentation, but we need to see that as the bigger picture, I think.
And I'm also interested in seeing if we can get the, at least get our definitely salaries, starting salaries up to, so they're competitive. If it has to be $500 overall our neighbors to the west of us, that's, that'd be great for local.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
Yep, so.
Well, and I, I, you know, like I said, I do think we're going to have to take a hard look at salaries because we are, we're facing stiff competition in the learning. There's, we're going to lose.
That agree.
I guess if there are no other comments or questions, I will also notify the departments that we typically start with a zero-based budget, which means they have to explain how they want to, why.
Everything.
Why everything.
Okay, and then on that. I'm sorry. So I know, just going through it the first time this year, the budget process, some provided more level of detail than others when, when making their requests. So I like to see some consistency, and, and I like as much detail as possible so we can make the best decision when we're, we're going through and either approving or, or cutting.
Okay, I will let them know. Most, most, most of our departments do provide a good amount of detail, but I know, I know what you mean. There are some that don't. Okay, all right. So the last item that I have on the agenda would be just kind of housekeeping. To discuss the non-civil service employees' annual leave accrual maximums. Due to pandemic closures, employees had a difficult time being able to use their accrued vacation leave balances. So during fiscal year 21, the commission approved a temporary extension of the year-end for vacation leave cap and roll date from fiscal year end, which is June the 30th, to calendar year end, which is this upcoming 12/31, December 31st. The cap and roll means that vacation days or hours accrued over the maximum accrual number are lost on that established date. So payroll staff have worked very closely with departments and employees to monitor and encourage employees to use their accrued leave by December the 31st of 2021. As a result, the number of employees with vacation leave balances over the maximum accrual amounts is at a minimum. On December the 9th, it was 27 employees, and when I checked on it today, it went down to 16 employees. And I anticipate by the end of the month, we should be down to just a handful of employees who are over the maximum. Now, to get the county back on its normal fiscal year-end schedule, I would recommend that this vacation leave cap and roll date be extended just one final time to get us back on to our normal schedule, June 30th. For non-civil service employees only, civil service employees must cap and roll their balances in accordance with West Virginia State Code 7-14-17A. And my state code, it's dictated that their balances cap and roll each year on December the 31st. We did extend them one time last year, but I believe that they are in a good position to, to go with their normal capital date. And then I would recommend that we extend our non-civil service back to their normal capital date of June the 30th. Now, we're all a bit not up to discussion right now. See if you have any thoughts or concerns, or if you'd like to go ahead and cap it on December 31st.
So you said there's what, seven or nine employees that?
There are 16 right now, but we have vacation week, or we have Christmas week coming up. And I know there's quite a few employees who are scheduling time over the next two weeks. So I'm anticipating it'll be about five to seven in a month. It'll be less than 10 employees, I think, who, who are at that, and the balances are fairly low. I think there's only two employees with high balances.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I think flexibility at this moment is good. I mean, we're still not out of the woods as far as COVID. So I'm going to make the motion to approve the extension of the non-civil service employees' vacation leave balance cap and roll from December 31st, 2021 to June 30th, 22, with the understanding that accrued but unused vacation days reimbursed upon termination of employment shall not exceed the maximum accrual based on years of service in accordance with policy 208.
So, any discussion? Oh, in favor say I? Post? Motion carries next. Thank you.
I have two papers on the side.
All right. All right, we are going to move on to agenda item number seven, public comment. Do we have anybody online that would like to speak? Okay, we'll move on. And then, Nathan, we're going to jump to old business, new business. We'll come back to you after. You want to go in the next session? Yeah, well, you're getting punched back, but relax. All right. I want to give, jump back to new business. We'll come back to Nathan. We, I did put the review of policy 319 Financial System Access on as old business. Ms. Shadle informed us that she would not attend the meeting tonight unless her attorney was present. Apparently, her attorney is not present, able to be present. So I'll just leave that on our agenda for the next meeting. And then I'll move on to agenda item number 10, update on contents of all the scope of work for Western Yonkers Office. I did speak to Dr. Kowski a week ago. He sent five of his top auditors to Jefferson County on January 3rd, and they will start on Monday, January 3rd. And our expected time to have that audit completed would most likely be the end of the first quarter.
It takes.
It takes a long time. All right, then we're going to move on to new business. Letter support number, number 11, or letter of support requested by Kukapin State Park Mountain Bike Trail System Economic Development Administration Competitive Tourism Grant. We have, there, Dave, we have David again. Go ahead, sir. The floor is yours.
All right, thank you. A little bit different than broadband as usual, but, so, the West Virginia DNR is going to be submitting a competitive EDA travel and tourism and outdoor recreation application here. Deadline is the end of January. The proposed project is for $3.5 million for a trail system at Kukapin State Park. This program is geared towards investment priorities for projects that are focused on new infrastructure, projects with a multi-state focus and that, or national focus, or projects in regions adversely affected by the travel tourism by the coronavirus pandemic. So we feel we have a competitive application based off the effect that coronavirus did have on the eastern panhandle. So the project we are proposing is 30, almost 35 miles of trails at Kukapin. So by leveraging the existing assets that are at Kukapin, whether it's the lodge, the cabins, everything that's there, they, the long-term goal is for Kukapin to become an International Mountain Bike Association Ride Center. So, ride centers have a history of promoting economic development, not just for the, the surrounding area, but the region, so attracting visitors from all over the country. So it's, it's a diverse group of trails. It's going to appeal to massive amounts of folks coming into the area. So it's, it's going to create jobs, it's going to support quality jobs and strengthen regional tourism. So due to its location, we feel that it'll help not only Morgan, Berkeley, and Jefferson County, but the, but the multi-state, other states around us recover from the but the, but the multi-state, other states around us recover from the coronavirus pandemic. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. We are there, we are looking for a letter of support from the Jefferson County Commission of the project. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions and go into further detail.
See if I have any questions for David.
Sounds like a great idea.
Yes, this is kind of a no-brainer.
Right.
I'll leave to send a letter of support as requested for the Kukapin State Park Mountain Bike Trail System to Mr. David Dees. Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. And I have a copy of it here. I'll sign this and leave it with Sandy.
Perfect, wonderful.
So she can scan it and send it to you however you want to receive it. Okay, okay. I'll sign that. I'll sign with Sandy. She has one with the letter there. Okay, thank you.
All right, wonderful. Thank you very much.
All right, number 12, Nathan, potential presentation of the comprehensive plan amendment to the county commission and schedule a public hearing.
Um, I would report to the commission that the planning commission met on Tuesday and determined to request the matter be put on the county commission's agenda for January 6th. So the presentation would happen then. Just wanting to make sure that we're in compliance with the code requirements of that presentation.
Okay, so do we need to make a motion, have it on the 6th or just be on the 6th?
Yeah, they're just going to put it on.
Understood. All right, that takes care of that. Before we go to Nathan, we'll just go ahead and county administrator reports set a date and time for legislative summit?
Okay, I'm just looking at some of the histories, some of the dates that we've had before. I'd like to schedule the ones like Sunday, September 6th for that afternoon. So we can get them in here if we're putting after we're in Charleston.
Yeah.
Think 1:30?
1:30. Yeah, 1:30.
Okay, do you need a motion?
Um, no, as long as you all agree, that would be fine. And I'd like to give a hybrid so that way they're on the road, summarizing plans.
And we can come here and go to lunch, then we can come back at 1:30 for an afternoon session. That'd be fine.
Well, we also have the comprehensive plan amendment to be presented in the public, and then the scheduled public hearing, is that also January 6th?
That'd be during the morning, or not during the morning, right, Nathan?
It's during the regular meeting.
During the regular meeting.
Well, if you think we'll be done by then.
And now we'll order pizza.
Okay. We've done that before.
And then you have something to update us on the executive system?
Yeah, I just like to update on the executive system. I had received, at first it was going kind of slow. We had like three or four, now we have seven. With everything going on, I'm really busy and it's just kind of trying to get time to actually look at them. Some of the reviews tomorrow's our last day. I was just thinking if I could maybe run a back pass, you could maybe just get a temp to come in to at least kind of fill in with like things on the phone, emails, meetings, things like that. And then I wouldn't have to train them with everything that this person would do. And then, you know, as we get an administrator, then we'd have some of our time back, we could actually hire somebody for that position. And they could be trained fully into everything that that position would do.
Okay.
I would just need your permission.
I'll move a motion to grant our acting county administrator to hire a temp as needed to fill the position of the executive system.
Second.
Any discussion, discussion, excuse me? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Thanks.
All right, we're going to move on to Nathan Cochran. I do know, can we have Nikki online?
I believe that she is available, yes. In my point of view.
Good, good, ma'am.
I want to back up just for a minute, and I know we're replacing one person. I'm wondering if we should hire two temps? We've got two people that are in vacancies in that office. It seems it's going to be a one-man army.
Do you, do you think you need two temps or would one suit you?
Maybe it's too hard.
I know you're asking.
You have to be the person that you already know a little bit more once we get scheduled for our meetings and things like that. And the skill sets, what they can send us, what we might need.
Okay.
But I appreciate that. But I think if I could at least get an extra body in there. So that way I can get by a bus or something. There's still a person, but not daddy. Because Michelle might be tied up or something. We'll, Michelle, so I just want to make sure downstairs there's still another one.
Yes. I'm like banging on the door and not being.
Right, and that's, that's what I feel could happen quickly, that I could be on the phone or in the restroom or something and if somebody's on that front door and yeah, there could be an issue with that. And our part-time temp, aimless speed person, their last day is Wednesday. So we'll be back to just one temporary aimless speed collector that's considered full-time, but she's not always there all day. Sometimes she leaves early or something like that. So sometimes the front office is in.
Sure. Thank you. Well, you need more help.
Thank you.
Absolutely. All right, we're going to move to the Nathan Cochran, five minutes. What items do we, can we talk about now? I'm assuming number five, I see Nikki, and she's on, she's online here.
Yes, we've been discussing perhaps an annexation of one of the buildings, downtown or part of one of the buildings to provide early voting, so it's easier for the public to access because of COVID and because of just the general nature of the courthouse being somewhat integrated for folks who have physical challenges. So Nikki, I believe, has been in some conversation with the Charlestown folks regarding the building. My primary concern with that was security of the election machines and things like that. And I think Nikki can.
Yeah, Nikki, I know you were over talking to the mayor and I would say the city manager. You want to give us a brief overview of that building and your thoughts if it would work or not?
Sure, sure.
And maybe address some of the security?
So I met with the city manager this morning and mayor trainer. And they let me tour the space. I also took Sean Posetti with me, our deputy clerk in elections. We both looked over the space. They have assured us that we can secure the, the building. We can set our own locks. They will change the locks out or the county will change the locks out where we would be the only ones that would have keys. So the access to the building would not be open to everyone. They would not even have access to that space in the building. And that includes the elevator because it is on the second floor. So one of my concerns was accessibility for disabled individuals. And they do have an elevator and that can also be blocked off and, and rekeyed to a lock that we only have access to. I also spoke to Russ Burgess in the IT and asked him if we would be able to set up cameras and have our own secure Wi-Fi connection. Just to clarify, the Wi-Fi connection is only for the laptop that we use to check in voters, our election equipment. Not even our poll books touch the internet at all. So it's just for the laptop that we use to check in voters. That way, as soon as they vote, they're marked as voted. He said that we have to work out some details, but he doesn't see why that couldn't be done. So I don't think security is a concern. I think the accessibility with the elevator is taken care of. So I don't see why it would be an issue. Code does require it to be either in the courthouse or courthouse annex in the county seat. So parking, while we would love to have somewhere else that had more accessible parking, I don't think that's going to be a possibility that we can address because even if we keep it at the courthouse, it's still the same parking issue. So it doesn't take away that part of it. But in our current room that we use, we're able to only set up about eight machines total. I believe in that room, we'll have to work on the privacy so someone can't walk behind someone while they're voting. But I think we'll be able to set up between 20 and 25 machines. So that will be able, that will allow us to process people a lot faster, so.
And you want to, you want to describe some of the problems we had last year with the lines, being described that a little bit too? I know, how many blocks went around now?
I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the last time, because we had so few machines in there and we had to keep everyone spread out because of COVID, our line did spread, usually it went down and around the Hunter House. And the average wait time, once we used our own staff to check voters in, the wait time got down to about two hours if you were in line around the Hunter House. Now, last time, we also did have the lengthy three pages of the bond levy that didn't help, certainly when people got in there. But, you know, we just didn't, the courthouse just doesn't have the space for it.
And we would need to move a motion to tonight to start the process so you can register this courthouse annex with the state. Is that correct? Nikki or Nathan? I'm looking, I'm looking at Nikki on the screen and Nathan, so.
I have prepared a draft annexation order for your review and possible signature. I will say, can just remind the commission that there still needs to be some agreement worked out. So this order says it's subject to agreement that we could work out with the city of Charlestown about obtaining the space. Additionally, this order said, it says that it would take effect on the 6th day of January, 2022. If we determine that we need to move that date or anything like that, then we may bring this back to you just to amend the order. But so if you choose to adopt this order tonight, then I would request that you authorize any necessary notice or publications to be made and that you authorize any necessary agreements to be made with Charlestown regarding the annexation space. Delegate to Commissioner Stoller for the authority of signing agreements.
Yeah, I think, I think this is a good idea and but I think there's going to be an education component to the voters to get them there besides just signs outside the courthouse. You know, we're going to have to do some more, more aggressive advertising.
And my apology to apparently Commissioner Jackson is online and I think Commissioner Hatt, she online as well now. Commissioner Hatt was the one that initiated this process, but I was not aware that those two folks would not be here tonight. But anyway.
I mean, so you recommend the motion is also to authorize our.
Any necessary publications or notices to be made.
And.
And to authorize any necessary agreements that need to be made. For example, with the city of Charlestown to be finalized and you, Commissioner Stoller, as opposed to sign that agreement on the app to commission.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to take a stab at this. Let me know if I get it right. I want to move to, to move a motion to have a courthouse annex for Charles Washington Hall, address being 100 West Washington Street, Suite 200, Charlestown, West Virginia 25414. And I'd like to authorize any publications to be published by the clerk's office and any agreements and authorized the chairman of this board to sign any agreements with Charlestown or any other.
I think that's good in just authorize or just agree to this annexation order.
And I'll add to that, we will, to add to agree to the annexation order that was drafted by our legal counsel. All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Nancy. Thank you, thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
Damn. All right, Nathan, we knocked that one out. Any other ones we can discuss in open session or you need to go and close session?
You know, at this point, I think I'm good.
You're good. Everybody. Well, that's the case then.
Unless you just want to talk.
No, we don't, no, no. I promised our guy in the back that we'd be done in an hour. I went over a little bit. All right, well, with that being said, this is our last meeting of the year. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you next year. If there are no objections, we are adjourned. Thank y'all.
Commissioner Stoller, you want to sign the order?
Does the annexation order, yes, sir, I'll send. Thank you, sir.